All right. All right, it is six thirty P M and I'm going to call the town pool P B C meeting to order for July first, twenty twenty four. Roll call.
Carol Anist.
Here.
Eileen Frankelino.
Here.
Sandy Nafus.
Here.
James Parati.
Here.
Counselor Tenyakos.
Here.
We have a quorum. Budge allegiance. Budge allegiance.
To the blood of the United States. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best will with liberty and just.
We get the round call and call order. That's. All right. So we are at this moment to public participation. Anybody in the room or on Zoom would like to speak? Come forward.
Hi, I'm Bill McCarthy. Two oh six Churchill Drive. I live right across the street from the Churchill Park. I I was trying to catch up on some of the minutes from three thousand years ago. And it looks like the pool project has been going on for quite a while. I saw that. It was twenty twenty or twenty twenty two that. You had a. An architectural firm do like a hundred and forty some odd page. Presentation what they thought should go on with Mill Pond. And I thought that was very comprehensive. This, at this point, I guess I'm trying to figure out. Is the committee? Going to actually? Submit a referendum question for for November? Or are we going to continue discussing? What we want to do with your pond and Churchill Park? That's it.
We do have one person online. Jump back and forth. References done. To be able to unmute your mic. You can state your name and address for the record.
Don Woods, eighty two Ivy Lane. I. Just wanted to congratulate the Zoom Committee. Hopefully they can move this process forward. I have been on the. Previous Mill Bond. Pool committing, very frustrating. I'm hopeful that this new committee needs more receptive arms. And sells a. Much needed pool renovation and sorry, not renovation, much needed pool replacement. To the community as we tried to on previous. On the previous committee. So. I'm just tonight going to listen and I hope that. I wish you guys the best. I guess that's the simplest way to put it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Anybody else in the room would like to speak?
Hello, Dana Avens, one thirteen father. I'm here to listen to. I'm excited, actually. Because now we're talking about both parks and I can't wait to see what the new plans are and. I've got an open mind. That's it.
Right, last call for anybody who'd like to speak on public participation, either online or in the room. All right, this time we'll move on to officer appointments, elections. At this time, I'm looking for a nomination for Chairperson of the Committee.
I'd like to nominate, I mean, Frankelino for Chairman.
Second.
Do you accept the nomination?
Sure.
There any other nominations for Chairperson at this time? Right? We'll do this as a roll call vote. Carol Anist.
Yes.
Eileen Frankelino.
Yes.
Sandy Nafus.
Yes.
James Parati.
Yes.
Counselor Tenyakos.
Yes.
That's unanimous vote. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you wish to undertake secretary appointment at this time?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking for nominations for Secretary for the Committee.
I nominate James Parati.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Ms. Parati, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Right. Are there any other nominations for Secretary of the Committee? Right? This time I'll take the vote. Carol Anist.
Yes.
Eileen Frankelino.
Yes.
Sandy Nafus.
Yes.
James Parati.
Yes.
Counselor Tenyakos. Unanimous.
Thanks, Rose. It isn't working.
Really? I'll show a live stream. All right. That takes care of our officer appointments. Before we get all the way into new business, we'll just go over the charge of this committee real quick.
Oh, that's streaming yet. Yeah.
Yes, it's too weird. I'm just saying why I have to have to stop and just turn. And it's like. Since got one real.
You might have put my link onto it, so. All right, so the council on. June twenty fifth charged this new committee with reviewing pools at both parks Churchill and Mill Pond. There was a request made to just go over a possible timeline for this project to be able to move forward at a possible November referendum. I can say pretty clearly unless this will be a standalone referendum, at this point, your timetable is extremely tight, saving the fact that the council may or may not. Move to wave action and move a new business item versus an old business. I'll give a quick rundown. So you were created as a committee on June twenty fifth. June twenty sixth would be the early state and we were to be able to appoint, sorry. To post for an agenda. We did that as of the twenty eighth, of course, I'm sorry, twenty seventh. Of course, we canceled that due to weather event. So we're meeting this evening. Based upon my review, we would have actually had to start at that meeting. With conceptual plan to counsel as new business, old business on July ninth. For them to move forward and request the bond council to create bond language for submission to the council for review on July twenty third. Public hearing schedule on August thirteenth. And a public hearing held on August twenty seventh. There is about a one week window inside of that before that language would need to be approved by town council, which is no later than September the fifth. If it were to be completed by that point, I have up until September twentieth as a town clerk to supply that to Secretary of State to request that to go on to the November ballot. There would be some publishings in between on that and the council would have the ability to determine if explanatory text would go out as part of this project. At that point, we pulled the referendum.
Take a break, take a break. Yeah.
Sorry.
Can you leave?
I will present it to council as well, yes.
Okay, and. Explanatory text is written by whom?
That is written by me.
Okay, good, nice.
I'll. Unfortunately, the statute puts that upon the town clerk with review by the town attorney.
Got you, okay.
So in addition to that, we'll do our normal advertising, which is for the referendum itself for the election this year. Now we're into early voting, so we have a little bit earlier point where we have to put that notice out for. So it's October sixth to sixteenth. And then, of course, ballots, if this were to happen, would become available as of October fourth, thirty one days before the election. And then, of course, the election would take place on November fifth. So a lot of, a lot of hurdles to overcome during that time period. We do have a good idea of it now. If it wasn't to happen in that specific manner, the council may choose to put forward a standalone referendum even on election day itself. Effectively, what that would turn into is two ballots handed to each elector. One for the referendum separately and one for the presidential election. So. If they chose to do it sooner or separate from election day, one that is a larger additional cost to open at least one or more polling locations. And in addition to that, you do have more costs for printing as well. We'd have that in either scenario.
So can you explain, James, to everybody? The, if you have a separate page, what the timeframe is? It's not on the ballot.
That will determine what the council goes forward with. So there'll be two options for that. You can do a referendum held within less than three weeks. At that point, individuals have to come into the clerk's office to get that ballot. It can't be mailed at that point, unlike the presidential ballot. If they choose to do it after in greater than three weeks, that would be a standard application. We'd be able to mail those ballots out. It'd be just like a standard election, whether municipal or presidential or governments.
It wouldn't cost any extra money.
There's always an extra.
Well, no staff cost.
Um.
Cause they'd already.
If the whole locations are open and it was taking place both on September fifth, there may be a couple of extra costs with that because they may require that they hold it with two separate machines, which would be two separate ballot tenders, two separate machine. The individual stands by the the machine as according to.
Monitor.
Thank you. So there is still a possibility of an additional cost, not as significant as holding it as a standalone.
What is, what's the timeline for standalone conceptuals? Is that push it back a couple?
Standalone, we could probably get all the way out to, if we went with the less than three weeks, we could get out to the end of September. For the council to take action. Of course, we're still thinking about bond language passage, public hearings, but if we got that approved by the end.
That would buy us a little bit more time.
That buys you a little bit of time, not a lot overall, but there is, there's a little bit more of a cushion in that.
Okay, if it's a two ballot election. You said something about them having to come in and get them or mail, you know, the ballot out. It's not just you don't walk into the, and you get pieces of.
You're talking about Election Day. What I'm talking about is. Depending on how the council goes, if we're not able to get it to the presidential ballot itself by September fifth.
Yeah.
What it would effectively becomes is either a standalone that's on Election Day or not Election Day. And then. A ballot that's less than three weeks or more than three weeks.
So if it is on Election Day, you can walk into the polls and get two pieces of paper and. Okay. And that, that, that costed actually being in.
Just the additional costs of about thirty thousand more ballots.
Yes, okay, just the printing.
Just the printing costs. Those are quite significant. For our ballots, they're usually, I believe, they are seventy five cents a ballot. As a double sided legal size, so.
But it wouldn't be double sided.
We actually are double sided.
No, 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 if we did a standalone, it was a separate ballot.
The opposite side is the instructions. So it's always considered a double sided unless you're able to fit the instructions on with your candidates.
Are they so expensive? Will they have to be super cheap?
Well, they have coding that goes on to those that's programmed into the scan machines themselves, yes.
Okay, I understand. Okay.
Thirty thousand or?
Did you say thirty thousand?
Well, you never know what. We always buy more than are necessary because, one, we've got early voting. We've got, so we tend to order. More than necessary because we've got absentees, we've got early voting, and we've got polling day. So we have the ability during early voting to not pull a ballot, but during absentee, we do. We never know how many people are going to go early, regular or absentee, so we have to make sure that we have enough ballots from each of those to be able to do it. So that's why I give you a round number of thirty, even though we have a total of about twenty two thousand voters. We still have a balance between all of that that we have to still make sure that we don't run out.
I, I. Can we do a separate, separate printing?
Separate printing.
Like, how long does it take to get those ballots printed?
We can do a separate printing if we were running low as of that Monday. It's a significant cost.
So. Oh, this is significant.
Yes.
Yeah, just over.
For thirty thousand ballots.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But you wouldn't need two ballot boxes and two.
That's another question we have to look at. We're looking at usually a seventy five to eighty percent turnout. The memory cards have a certain limitation to them, so we may still be running two at minimum, but they should be able to program the whole piece, correct?
Wow, yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Lots of moving parts.
Yes.
So it all depends on where you guys get to as a review and determination and when that comes to council.
Gotcha. Okay.
All right, with that completed. I turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Done. Okay, number six on our agenda said discussion of the history of the pools and that's Mr. De Mayo's job.
Okay, there's a lot of history to the pools. Of course, I've been celebrating my tenth year here. And I think it started about seventeen years ago when. Wendy Ruben was the superintendent, I believe, in the study with Eleanor Sullivan Company in South Carolina. Then it went to Bruce Hill and then it went to. Me. So what happened, just to clarify everything. My first day on the job or second day, I think Jeff Barron came to me and said he was the Department Administrator, Director of Administrative Services, and said. You have to design a really cool pool at Churchill in a park. In thirty days to get it in time for the Capitol Room Program. Before you got here, we already hired McMoone McBride, architect and engineering firm. You have to work with them and finish the project up. So that was my mission and I was brand new here. I didn't know exactly how everything worked. But came up with the best possible master plan I could think of at Churchill Park and it included a family destination pool splash pad. A, at the time, a lazy river, short quarter. It was just around the pool. And it also included, at the time, Newington High School volleyball was really, really good. And we had sand volleyball. We had basketball courts. We had tennis courts. We had pickleball courts. We changed the softball court. Softball field into field turf, which was a few million dollars. In regards, that was going to be a multipurpose field of softball, football, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey. It included scoreboards. It included more parking. There wasn't much it missed. It had three or four pavilions. We moved the pond into the wetlands for additional parking spaces and for volleyball courts. And it included lights and the highest camera technology. It had pretty much every bell in West. It came to about nineteen million dollars. We did have a walkthrough to explain to people what McBride and McMoone did in their conceptual drawings. Me personally, you know, I, I was like in a whirlwind going, what the heck is this project? And we had a public hearing. People came, we explained what we were going to, you know, planning on trying to do, et cetera. That was then and it didn't appear that there was an appetite. For, for the project. I only. Proposed projects in my mind with, when there's. Possible leadership wants something done. That's, I'm an administrator. When they said what they want the administrator to do, I go out and do it. So that was that and it kind of go on deaf ears. And we moved on our, I focused my attention on more. Things that I could accomplish, like building new fields and lights at baseball fields, et cetera. Then there was some appetite for Mill Pond Park. What happened is at the state level. The. Department of Early Childhood. Is. Getting. Pressure by private camps like YMCAs and Camp Slopers and private. Camps that are run either nonprofit or for profit. That towns are exempt from the rules that they have to buy by for summer camp. Two years ago, we were tipped off by our legislators that be, be careful, be warned that this is coming down the pike. It got canned at the last minute last year. This year, they formed a. A pretty strong committee representing all across the state. So it, it appears to me that. There is going to be a change of rules about having summer camp. For those of you who don't know, we have about five hundred and thirty eight children in our summer camp. It's the biggest ever, over nine weeks. Approximately two hundred and fifty kids are at Churchill and approximately two hundred and fifty here at Mortons and Community Center. In my opinion, we won't have the money in this town to build the requirements needed. By the Department of Early Childhood for summer camp if this rule passes next year, the year after. It includes such things as drinking bottles, handicap accessible bathrooms, nurses' station, health, health checks. IEDs, a variety of things that. It's not likely we're going to be able to have. Or i- if we do have it, it will be a costly, costly event. So in my thinking, as a Parks and Recreation professional, I try to think, well, how do you save money for the town and the taxpayer? What you'd probably do is bring them here to Mark, to the Orange Community Center. And or to the Newington High School, depending on how it all shakes, but and program accordingly to how you could possibly. Make this thing, whole thing work. So. Once that came into effect, it became very evident to me that if you were going to do. And both pools were built around the same timeframe and they're, they're both in deplorable condition. We've spent. Hundreds of thousand, if not millions of dollars, trying to repair and keep them running. At both cracks, filtration systems, all four, big pool, small pool. At both pools have been replaced over my ten years. We have companies come in for thirty thousand dollars a shot, trying to fix the cracks and repaint, catch paint them. We have all kinds of. Concrete is, is crumbling and sprawling in every location practically. I spent thirty two thousand dollars on redoing. The bathhouse at Churchill was collapsing. It, the chlorine in the basement ate away the metal girders that hold the building up. So we had a company come in and jack the building back up and put new iron. Pillars in. At Churchill, we went down, the, the year before I got here, Dave Langdon, he, he found thirty six holes under the. Concrete. Concrete decking of Churchill and we did this. Crazy idea of digging down, picking up planks of concrete, fixing the pipes and then moving on and re-cementing them. And then a couple of years later, the twelve or fourteen inch drain pipe that was fourteen feet deep at the bottom of Churchill. Cracked on us and we were losing hundreds and thousands of gallons of water. We, I think at the time of our thinking, we replaced the full amount of water at Churchill three times over the summer. Over three hundred and fifty thousand each time of gallons of water. So we put a sock in it. They call it a sock, but it's like how with the M D C. Went through all the sewer pipes in, on Cedar Street in Newington and they have a company come in. It seemed to work. It's guaranteed for one year. That was about five years ago, six years ago. So. You know, we're on borrowed time. You know, could it go tomorrow or could it go another ten years? I don't know. We put a camera through it. It appeared to be. Still there, but not positive on, can't really bank on anything. Then the ADA came into effect and really we're struggling with ADA accessibility to the pools. We don't be, the ADA has been in existence for thirty three years, July twenty sixth, nineteen ninety by President Bush. However, we weren't good at it here in town in Newington. We ignored the playgrounds. We ignored the pools. We ignored our facilities. We ignored our softball fields, our baseball fields, et cetera. So we, we're. We're in, we're not in compliance. With the ADA. Some people could say, what do I know about the ADA? One, I've lived the ADA my whole life. Two, I've been certified nationally by the University of Missouri, State University as an ADA coordinator. I've been the president of the ADA Coalition of Connecticut for the last ten years. And the governor has just appointed me for my second term as Vice President of the State Rehabilitation Council. So I have some experience and knowledge about and training. And I speak pretty much all over the country in regards to Parks and Recreation and ADA. For those of you who don't know, I probably visited thirty five states in the National Recreation and Parks Association before I came to Newington. I've served on the National Board. I've been the state president. And also the New England Council Chairman. For several years. I visited thirty five states and at that time I would visit every pool, every splash pad, every skate park. Every baseball, football and basketball arena. And take seven days and try to absorb as much education and knowledge as I possibly can. So I have some background behind. I'm not bragging about it. I just want to make sure those of you don't know me. When I speak, it's pretty much has a lot of facts behind it. So we come to how do we accomplish Newington? Newington is unique in the fact that it doesn't move quickly. And as a result, we've been working on ten years of trying to. Develop a pool design, a conceptual design, a master plan for Mill Pond Park. Because we went through the town hall renovations and we are pleased as punch. As to what came out as a multipurpose facility and it solved so many problems and it's serving so many people. So kudos to Newington. Residents and kudos to the council and the mayors and everybody that got involved. And supported the community center because I did tell you here that it is one wonderful facility being used twenty four seven. And is a, 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 a thing that's going to be successful for Newington for the next fifty years, probably. So we have a brand new preschool. We moved from the church, for Church of Christ Congregation, and we have now a beautiful preschool facility. What did that bring us? That brought us. A very successful preschool program certified by the Department of Early Childhood. So that's how we know the, the rules and regulations of childhood. Across the street here, you can look probably across the street and you'll see a, a temporary playground that I installed. That we did because that's a requirement by the Department of Early Childhood for any preschool programs that are state certified. And what happens is you can't, the way the rule basically states is you can't have a three to five year old child. That's this can visibly see a body of water without fencing. So we couldn't use the existing handicap accessible playground because our kids couldn't walk there without a fence. So we decided to build this. I can't even remember exactly the square footage. I think it's eighteen square feet, but don't quote me. I can find that out tomorrow for sure. But I'd say it's eighteen or twenty square feet per kid. We came out with thirty two kids in the preschool program. We needed twenty seven hundred square feet to meet the state regulations. So that's why that playground is over there now. That, as you'll see, was part of incorporated in part of the master design for the new pool. And that's why I bring it up. Many people say, why are you doing that? So that's, that's the answer. Everything that we've done to, to design this. Pool and splash pad was done with purpose and with knowledge and with facts, factual information. So then we said, okay, if we get our kids, if we have a preschool here, we also ended up opening up a summer sunshine program. Another unbelievably successful preschool program, nine weeks in the summer. And then we do the whole, so now we have a program, three, three to five year olds all year round. Now that kids are going to school at five, we anticipate we're going to have even more kids applying and more on a waiting list here. So we have the preschool program. We have two hundred and fifty kids in our summer camp kindergarten, first, second grade and third, first and second grade, third, fourth, fifth and sixth through eighth is at Churchill Park. So we came up with an idea of maybe we should. Start to redesign Mill Pond Pool. And what a Parks and Recreation professionals all over the country do is you always move your, a new pool to a different location than your existing pool. Some may ask, why would you do that? Well, the reason is, is to keep. People from complaining to elected officials and the Parks and Recreation Boards and staff. That you closed the pool for two summers. Didn't you know better than that? So when we were in my former job in New Britain, and I do have some experience building several pools, several splash pads, several family destination pools. So what you, the plan was, was to keep Mill and Churchill running as long as we possibly could. And keep the cracks going, you know, solving the cracks, painting the pools, using bubble gum and glue and Bailey Wick to try to keep it going. And that's what we've been doing. We've been taking down walls at Mill Pond. We have leakage. We have hot water heaters, a twenty six thousand dollar hot water heater. We just replaced the waiting pool filtration system for thirty five thousand dollars at Mill. We just replaced the waiting pool filtration system for thirty five thousand dollars at Mill. We, five years ago, we replaced fifty thousand dollars worth of filtration system at the big pool. And we have an aqustatic pressure problem. The pond water is bubbling up where the deep end is at Mill. And brown water is coming up when we. Drain the pool to paint it. So we have to drain the pool and. And then paint it quickly before the pond water fills the pool. So during the winter, you'll notice that we keep water in Mill Pond Pool and that's only to keep the pond water out. So we have to keep a same amount of aqustatic pressure. On the outside, on the pool side versus the base, basic thing. So we designed a pool that had some fun to it. Um. As you know, many pools, you know, back in the day when the American Red Cross changed their diving hopper, uh. The uh depths in widths and lengths. It became a problem, so most diving boards got taken out. What we found was middle school and high school kids had no fun at a pool and it was less appealing to them to come. So we designed a pool that tried to solve the problem of many, many, many users from preschool to senior citizens and everything in between. So for preschoolers and senior citizens and people with ADA mobility issues. You now, nowadays, things have changed from nineteen sixty. Of how you design a pool. What you do now is you have a zero depth entry, which is like a beach. Starts at zero, you know, and the water goes one inch, two inches, one foot, two B, three B. And that allows people with walkers or wheelchairs to easily enter the water. It also allows preschoolers to sit on the ground that, on the pool floor. At one inch of water or one foot of water and enjoy whatever depth their parents feel safe with them. We also added, we took away a waiting pool and replaced that with the zero depth entry area. Then we had high school, we have a very comprehensive program at the high school as well as the New Eaton Swim Club. And we do that all year round and in the summer, they mostly swim fifty meters. At Churchill Park early in the morning, six o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock. And those are mostly, well, it's all ages really. And um. They would be a competitive program and then we would in- introduce. Recreational competitive swimming with other towns like Rocky Hill, Weatherford, Berlin. And we would have lap lanes. So we put in eight lap lanes. Um, in the lap lanes, we have an area for starting blocks. And the starting blocks are mobile, so you can move, the park guys can move them in and out when we need them. We also put two blocks, uh, that one, one meter diving board. For middle school and high school kids mostly to en- encourage them to have fun at the boards with a bigger hopper. And on each side of the diving board, we put two blocks for competitive swim. Uh, teaching people how to use uh diving blocks. For uh competitive swimming when you dive into five feet of water. So. Those will be in the design. Also, to the right of the design, and you all have pictures of it. Is three fun features. One is a, a small curling slide. For the kid, you basi- basically, I'd say, second grade to, to eighth grade type of thing for the slide. And if parents want to go down with their little ones, they can. We have a ti- a tilted rock wall that's seven and a half feet tall on the edge of the pool. And you climb up it and when you can't climb anymore, you're tired, you fall into five feet of water. So that's really fun for middle school and high school students to bring them back. And then we also have, um, let's see, dive boards, lifeguard, uh, duh, 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 and that's it for that, for the, the pool features. And those you can see at A W Stanley Pool in New Britain, if you ever want to drive by. Or um, there's pools around different towns that have them now. Um, the pool also has a splash pad, a four thousand square foot splash pad. Splash pad is really open space, kind of like a playground, but it has water features. The greatest thing about splash pads nowadays is that we call it the shoulder months of your pool. So you can open a splash pad on April first, when you get those nice warm days. Or you can keep it open to October thirtieth. And what happens is you're spending good money of taxpayers' money and you keep the facility open longer. So a splash pad is, allows people, parents to sit on their, on the uh. Park benches all around the splash pad and watch their kids or read a book or whatever while their kids are playing. It's totally computerized, totally in, um, totally auto- automated. Where you might hit, uh, do, if it say it has an animal theme like a dog. You hit the dog's nose and the, the splash, the water starts turning on over here. It goes on for two minutes. Then it goes off and the next animal, the bear starts shooting water. And you run over to the bear and the bear shoots buckets of water on the kids' heads. For two minutes or one minute, whatever you program it for. Then that ends and then you go to, and there's like maybe fifteen or twenty pieces in a splash pad. Um, really entertaining, it's very, very attractive. It's cost, it saves money galore. No lifeguards, no, um, no. No problems with uh health departments. It eliminates a lot of the. Uh, chlorination problems some of the, of the year. We designed, or Mike, uh, Mike and I designed splash pads with two ideas. Two ideas of this, in the summer, you use the, the bath house. And use hot showers because the state health code requires you to have sock, hot soapy showers. To use a splash pad where you recycle the water, that's what the state requires. But once we close the pool after, say, the second or third week of August, then we close down the bath house. Keep the two bathrooms open at the bath house in the family changing room. And you let people use the splash pad and throw the water away. But to be via environmentally savvy, what you do is you design the, the drain pipe to go to gray water. And what I do there is I design it so I take the gray water from the splash pad, put it into a holding tank. And put it into our irrigation system and pump water to the, the, the natural grass that's on the, the soccer fields, the kickball fields. So that's a good environmentally sound project that most towns do nowadays when they're, when they're doing it. There's a woman, Carol Anis, on your, your, uh, your committee here that came up with the great idea of solar panels. And we really have, have been exploring that idea and we find it to be very entertaining for us. And it could be a time where we put solar panels on the roof and heat either the shower water. Or we're looking into the splash pad to take the edge off of the splash pad from April to, to May or whatever, in September and October. Or actually, Mike is now in- investigating a heat exchange machine, uh, pump that some of you have at your houses. Um, and it's about twenty thousand dollars. And we're going to investigate putting um a heat exchange so that we can heat the water at the pool. Uh, some maybe two hundred and ninety gallons, thousand gallons of water. And maybe be able to open the pool at a longer, several months before and after the summertime. So maybe we can have special events, some flick and float for adults. To show a movie, we can do it for kids floating on inner tubes while they watch a movie. We can open, uh, we could do swim lessons on Saturdays, Saturdays. We could do recreational swim on Sundays and Fridays. In Colorado and in the Midwest. God bless you.
Thank you.
Oftentimes you will see pools that are open all year round because the sun's out. And they heat the water. So people, you know, maybe have a towel over them or something. They get to the edge of the pool. They drop their towel and their slippers and. Jump into the water and they swim for an hour and then they get out. So it's, it's an entertaining idea and I think it could be very, very successful here in Newington. And what it would do is if you spent twelve million dollars. Your return on investment would be much greater and, and really, uh, I think it would be very appealing to the taxpayers and to any referendum voters. So, um, I think that's a, a pretty good history of what's going on. I've only. I've come to the town council only a few times and that's only been when elected officials or people have come to me. And said, we have some money for you to use. We think we could help you. And that would be the only reason. I would never go to the town council asking for, for money if I didn't have. Some type of lead on what was going on. And a few times that's happened. Um, I mean, unfortunately, it's gone by the wayside for different reasons. But I do believe there could be some grant money at the, the state level, uh, if we were to commit to something. And I also do believe that, um, there would be some, some uh ability to, to appeal, appeal to grants either on the private. Or the federal level uh in the future. So I think that's kind of where I'm at. If there's any questions, I can answer them. I think I wanted it. I don't want to take all night for you guys.
I, I think one of the things that we also had to consider in, in terms of the location of the pool, it wasn't just because of it. Not, you know, having, being able to keep Mill open while this was done, um, this groundwater tables were.
Yep.
Much better to build over here than.
Yep.
Anywhere in the.
Yeah, I could address that. I'm sorry. I, I missed that. The. We did geotech studies all over the pond. Um, I think. John Donio wanted the pool on the south side of Mill. We, we made, dig, we dug holes there. We dug holes all around this pond. We, we took a look at the playground. There, there's like six inches, the, the water table at the playground, water bubbles up through the permeable rubber surface when it's bad weather. If anybody comes to our special events, you know, the beer garden has to be moved. Everything, you're, you're in a foot of water there all the time. Uh, when it rains. The troll lane gets dumped on. Um, so we, we've done a whole variety of studies. And low and behold, Garfield Street here on, coming close to the, between the baseball field and the path. Is the, the best uh scientific study because it's between four and six feet of table, of, of wa- uh, the ta- water table. So that is why we went with that decision. And it's also, um, it makes good sense because we're out of the wetlands. We're out of the, the, um, hundred foot. Uh, waters, I forget what they thought, the water zone or whatever.
Up there, up there.
Up, up land, uh, review.
Review area.
Review area, thank you. Um, and we didn't want to get involved in the wetlands thing because we'd have to go to Boston with the, the federal government and. That would take probably between three and five years. So, um. That didn't make sense. And then also water, concrete that sits in water twenty four seven with thawing. And frost, thaw, frost, thaw, frost all winter long does not. Allow the concrete to have a long, healthy lifetime, uh lifespan. As some pool experts would tell you and have told me, you made a mistake sixty years ago. Why would you want to make a mistake again? And that's really what we've gone with. I also have a letter back. Maybe eight years ago from Salvo Chlorine Company and they're, they refuse to. To bring liquid chlorine, which we've been using for fifty, sixty years here. Um, because they're afraid their insurance won't cover them on a liquid chlorine spill. So they, if, they're afraid it would go right into the pond. So what happened to us, we had to change all the filtration uh automated systems into powdered chlorine. And so we're, we constantly work with that program and, and have moved to a powdery substance now. Some people said, you're, you're not moving the square footage. You, you're, you're taking up park space. But Mike and I have looked at that and studied it and if anybody could see the pool, the existing Mill Pond Pool from here. There's a fence line and then there's about twenty thousand square feet of grass. That we really don't open space, that we can't really utilize as, as residents of Newington, because it goes all the way down to the pool pond. So if we move and demolish the bath house in the pool. We gain another twenty thousand square feet of open space to the park. The whole idea is, is a landscape architect. Like Mike, that's an expert that, that does pool design and park design all over the Northeast. Wants to, to open up the park and let the pond be the focal, focal point of the park. So what you do is you move the bath house closer to here. You make it look, the facade look exactly like the facade of this town hall and community center. So it looks like one big government campus. Similar to like Simsbury where the library, the police station, the Parks and Rec and all that is all in one area. That's what you would kind of get here, that look. And it would open up the whole middle of the, of the park. So we could still play soccer, kickball, flag football, et cetera. Some people have asked me, why did you get rid of the baseball field? The simple answer is this. Fifty, sixty years ago, when the high school was here, that was the only alternative for a baseball field. But if you notice, there's no baseball of fence around it. So what's happening is we have more use of this park than ever. And it's a dangerous, unsafe situation to have baseball, ninety foot baseball field. In Mill Pond anymore because people are walking, they're seeing concerts, they're what, they have playgrounds going on. Basically, you can't afford to have baseballs whack at each other. So that's why at Clem Lamir now, we're all fenced in and all the things. And at Alumni Baseball Field, we're all fenced in and safe and for people. So public safety is a big issue also. So I hope that addresses the wide things.
Okay, and you, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Bill, for the, for the current plan that we have with the pool that we all got sent out to us, can you give a history about when that plan started? And like how long it's been in development?
I, I think on the budget, uh, it must be about four or five years off the top of my head. Um. That's when it, it kind of started and it's been developed out and we. Put, Mike.
Twenty one.
Is twenty one?
Yeah.
Okay, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, so about four years maybe. And, um, that's been going on and we've extrapolated out. Every year that it goes up, the cost goes up like five percent. And, um, goes from there. So, um, that's the answer there. And the other thing about a splash pad at Mill. Um, it's, you get an economy of scales also, uh, that not only do all the kids. Come here and also our teacher Tuesdays, we have, we plus all the elementary school kids here on Tuesdays, every other Tuesday. They could use the splash pad too. But if you have a contractor in here that's bonded, mobilized and all that, they could build a splash pad. For a little bit less than what you would do if you just built it by itself. So for instance. Um, a million dollars is basically the cost of the pool of splash pad. But here at Mill, we've projected it might be eighty, eight hundred thousand dollars and that's because of the economy of scales. Um, if we build the splash pad at Churchill, which I guess I should probably talk a little bit about that. We've talked about a splash pad at Churchill. Because it makes good sense to try to run Churchill Pool to the ground, right? Wait until it cracks or fails so bad. That we can't use it anymore. But that could be one year, could be two years, could be three. I don't know. Uh, uh, nobody knows that answer. But if you keep that open and you get rid of the waiting pool and tr- use the electricity, the drainage. And the plumbing supply. And you put a splash pad there at Churchill that can circle towards the outside of the fence. Towards the, between the, the shallow end of the pool and the basketball court. You would have a beautiful uh setup there. So to use again, the bath house of Churchill for hot soapy showers. On summertime and in the other time you could use the splash pad. The reason why we would recommend that and the Parks and Recreation Board, I think, believes in it, is that. We have about seventeen thousand picnickers every summer from April first to Columbus Day in October. When I first got here, we only, we only had two pavilions. And then we built, we found that so many people were using it every Saturday and Sunday that we built the rotary pavilion. So now we have three pavilions every Saturday and Sunday being used. But those grandparents and parents would love to have the opportunity. To have their kids cool off at the splash pad while they're having their weddings, their Jack and Jill's, their family picnics, their church functions, et cetera. So that made good logical sense, um, to replace the idea of, um, replacing the pool at Churchill. So that's kind of where, where I was at there.
You're good?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well. I asked you to do a job, you do a job. Get it done, man. Okay, so, um, six P is future recommendations to the town council. Um, is that coming from Mr. Fortuna or is that?
Well, I think this committee has to, uh. Decide if they agree with some existing plans. Do they agree with the idea? But the Parks and Recreation Board, it consents, consent, consent to the, um. Splash pad at Churchill as a new idea to add. To the project when they decided, what do you want to do with Churchill and Mill was the town council's charge. I think the Parks and Recreation Board recommended to, is gonna recommend to this group and to the town council. That we should add a splash pad to the, the program to make this a comprehensive. Program, I think is, but so I guess this group has to either agree or disagree on that. I think we want to be united in whatever we do, leadership all the way down to the grassroots. I'm hoping that everybody, all the residents, all the town, everybody wants to jump on board. And make this a comprehensive, nice program, uh, get it done quickly before the pools collapse. And then it move on from there. Because it's gonna take probably two summers to. Uh, finish up the design and, you know, to go to a final design, go out to bid and construct, um, our program.
Okay, um. Okay, um, well, what I did was at the last council meeting, I took some notes and I listened to what people said. Both in the meeting and I talked to people outside um about their concerns about what we were doing and what their suggestions might be. So I wrote down what what the big concerns were. First of all, we need to look at the whole park system. Which is, that's our charge. So that was kind of like easy to answer. Um, parking was a big issue. Now that it looks like we're going to have O F I, that's going to answer some of that. Um, there's also some plan for some parallel parking on Garfield Street and possibly the addition of a row at the library. So that should take care of that problem. Um, people would like an unobstructed view of the pond. I don't think anybody is going to object to that. Um, obviously, we're going to get rid of the back house. There is some concern about whether to take the concession stand down or not. And something that we're going to have to discuss because there is a um. A purpose for it other than concessions. There's bathrooms in there which are great for the tennis players or anybody. Walkers in the morning will come and walk around and build stuff on. Um, it's nice to have them there. And it's nice to have a concession stand, um especially on concert nights. Um, I don't think the little kids who are swimming are going to walk over there to get food, but you know, concert nights, it's nice after the braids, it's nice. Um. During extravaganza, it's open. Um, there's a good storage area there as well. So we'll have to um. Um, we'll have to talk about that one. That's something that we're going to have to consider. Um, other people at the meeting said, don't just rubber stamp what we're given, discuss these versus ones. Um, and don't rush to refer rush to referendum, which we cannot rush to referendum because. We had a ranch draw. It's not going to happen. We're going to have to either, you know, do the two ballots or stand alone with random. We can decide that as we move forward. Um, people um stressed that. Um, we've got to come up with a plan for both pools. That's our charge to come up with a plan for both pools. Um, personally, I think that with all the development going on in town, our population stands to grow as much as ten percent. Um, so I think that over the next few years, while while Churchill is still viable and up and working, that we need to collect data. And we can make a data-driven approach. And that way we have some facts behind us and we can see what the best move forward is as far as as Churchill role. Uh, we don't know. We don't know. If that ten percent of our community decides they all love to come and swim. Well, we could be in trouble. So we have to wait and see. Um, the open space footprint of the pool, the new version of the old, um, Phil gave us a new chart today. Um, so that's being dealt with. Um. Other people said ask questions of the experts. Personally, I think that goes without saying. Um, the location, we just discussed that was another um concern for some people. Um, and the amenities, you know, these versus ones. I think that we have to have some special amenities so that there are um older kids that want to come. We don't have to. We can decide we want them all, we can decide we want to. That's going to have to be in a discussion. Um, be sure to make um. Oh, to keep both the council and the public, you know, we are being broadcast publicly, so that shouldn't be an issue. We'll have minutes available and my plan is to um meet with the council on a regular basis. So nobody can say we didn't know what was going on. Um, be sure to look at the work that was done in the past. Somebody else said, I think that goes without saying. Um, do not create a Disneyland type project. Well, obviously, we don't have that kind of money. Um, so, um. The council is looking for this to be an interactive project. They want to be informed. Um, we have good bones for our mill project. We don't have. We have a splash pad at Mill. Uh, what are we going to do? Uh, my suggestion would be to look at the numbers over the next few years and then make that decision as we move forward.
Talking about Churchill?
Yeah, it's Churchill, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, but that's, those were the big concerns coming out of the um. Meeting last week of people that I I spoke with. I don't know if anybody else has any concerns that um might have been missed. Yes, no, no, those are what we've been hearing on the street. Yeah, so that's fair.
If I if I may, James, what was the big facilities study Owens? Yeah, so just to set the record straight, I I hear all these crazy things on the council meetings and that and on Facebook. The Owens group, just so you know, everybody swearing, oh, the Owens study and the Owens study. Well, the Owens study, just for clarification, subcontracted with Mike Fortuno, who's our architect. And in pool person to give them the answers that the town was requesting of Owens. So we've got the best of the best and Owens knows it and they proved it to me by hiring him. And it's, so I just want to make sure that this is no nickel and dime operation. And we have been studying all these questions for four years, not only for ten years actually, but for four years. Yeah, seventeen years, but but really, you know, concentrating in the last four years.
Yeah, um, and I I think as much as we have presented this information before, as much as it's been out there. There are still people saying, well, we never saw it all and we never saw this, we never saw that. It's out there. Um, so people are just going to have to.
If it's okay, Madam Chair, would it be okay to just Mike's Mike's doing this for free for us? If you could just let him have a, Mike, do you have a few words? Did I miss anything?
Um, Bill, I don't think you missed anything. I think maybe you put a little extra in there. No, I I mean, I I think you summarized it well. I I think the, one of the most important points to make that. Um, I think needs to be made is that this project hasn't even, hasn't gone through a design phase yet. It's only gone through a master planning phase. So it's not like, it's not like you're going to take this master plan and go build it. So all of these concerns, all of these um questions about design elements, is this in, is this out? Is the pool too big, is the pool too small? You've got an entire design process to to flush all that out and make sure you right-size everything. Um, not just for programs, but for budget. So I think um, you know, a lot of, a lot of times. You know, you you put together master plans, but they're living, breathing documents that change over time. We issued the first master plan for this park in March of twenty eighteen. It got updated in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one and then again in twenty twenty-three. Um, so it is a living document. It it does change. Um, but once, once you go to referendum with the number, then you design to the number. And so um, you know, there's plenty of opportunity for this committee and the public and the county town council. Uh, to provide input and steer this project towards the right project. Um, so we don't want to just build it right. We want to build the right project and that means a lot of public input to get there. So, you know, we, we've done a lot of pools um and what I can tell you. Is that every pool is different, every community is different. We don't have. Uh, unless you're building a competition pool inside a building somewhere where it's prescriptive. None of, none of the pools that we've done are the same. Everyone's different and it's driven by public input and need. So um.
And just to give these guys an idea of numbers, this isn't like a nickel and dime. This is a population of thirty thousand people. Twenty-two thousand visits in eight weeks at Churchill, twenty-two thousand visits in eight weeks at Mill. And um, we do about four thousand swim lessons. So we're talking about a lot of people in this town. It, so you know, you you, I know twelve million dollars a big number, but it's also a lot of people are being served. And it's a lot of variety of people. We have about thirty or forty senior citizens Monday through Friday from twelve to one o'clock. With free recreational swim at Mill Pond and then we have an ice cream social at the end of it and stuff like that. So. We have that, we have pool parties for the kids with a DJ on the deck. And we have infl- inflatables and we have inner tube water polo. There's a lot of stuff going on at the pool. Every summer camp kid gets three two-week sessions, Monday through Friday of swim lessons. At each pool and then they have recreational swim in the afternoon. So it's it's a lot. And at night from six to eight, it's family swim and Saturdays and Sundays, family swim. So we attract a lot of people uh to the park in into the pools. So just to let you know.
Mike, um, it's Eileen. I have a question. Um, when you hear these numbers from Bill, twenty-two thousand visits. Um, is this pool big enough to handle? Um, those numbers, should we only have one pool in town?
Uh, if you only have one pool, then your twenty-two thousand at each pool maybe goes to thirty, thirty-five thousand at this pool. Um, I think it becomes a programming issue for Bill to figure out timing and what's available. Uh, to who and when. Um, but yeah, I think the pool can handle thirty thousand visits.
Mm-hmm. So what what he means by programming, if I can explain it in our business. So that's why the splash pad is great. So you take, okay, all kindergartens go from nine to ten o'clock at the splash pad. The first and second graders go to swim lessons from the same time. And then the older kids, third and fourth grade, go underneath the tent and do the arts and crafts project at their summer camp thing. So what you do is you move kids like a big amoeba and you know, you guys go here, you goes and you keep moving these stations around. And it might be soccer on the other side of the field and it might be kickball somewhere else. So that's kind of what, it's a programming professional job. To make people move around and some play tennis or pickleball, some play basketball and then we move to the pools.
Mike, um, you you lost me there because if there's twenty-two at one pool and twenty-two at the other. And then you cut that number down to thirty-three?
Well, third, I it's hard to predict, but some people, some people that live on the Churchill end, if the pool goes away. Aren't going to travel across town. So they'll find other places to go. Um, or or not go. It it's hard to predict, you know, every town's a little different. Um, but you know, for example, in New Britain, as Bill knows well, they went from um five outdoor pools to two. And uh, the the population sort of shifts around. And more of them are using the splash pad and just foregoing the pool. So if you had a splash pad at Churchill, I think a lot of the, a lot of the kids will still go to Churchill for a splash pad, but stop using the pools. Because they, for whatever reason, don't have transportation or, you know, don't want to go across town. So not everybody that uses Churchill's pool will use Mills Pool.
And just so everyone knows, splash pads are more of an attraction than any pool. Right now in two thousand twenty-four, every kid, every grandparent, every parent loves the splash pad. Because they're open longer and they they're just entertaining.
Yeah, we just um, just to to highlight that point, we we've been working with the city of Hartford for the last. Year to get their pools and splash pads up and running. So they got seven pools in four parks. And they have fourteen splash pads across the city. We were getting calls daily from folks worried about the splash pad opening and nobody was calling worried about the pool's opening.
Waterbury just advertised a week ago on the news, they have seventeen splash pads. Um, you know, New Britain is about up at five now. West Hartford's around four or five. So people are putting in splash pads everywhere.
Yeah, for sure. Yep.
There anything else that you think we you could share with us that would be of importance?
Well, I think um, you know, as Bill said, this pool is really designed to attract all ages. So there's something for everybody. Um, that comes obviously with a price tag, but I I think if you're going to provide an amenity to the community. Then we find you typically get broader support if there's something for everybody. Um, so I I think, you know, we spent a lot, a lot of time working um on the master plan and on the pool plan. And I I think it's the right plan for this community. Um, but again, it's, you know, there's a design process to go through and, you know, there's a lot of decisions to be made. A lot of really important decisions to be made about, you know, six lanes versus eight lanes and pool depths. And um, you know, all of that programming, uh zero depth entry and whether there's spray features in the zero depth. Uh, in addition to the splash pad and the size of the slide and climbing wall in New Britain. That A W Stanley Park is a huge attraction. The kids love it. Um, in order to get it approved by the health department, we spent close to a year doing research on injuries and and um. What we found is that it's one of the safest pool amenities um across the board. Uh, it's really hard to get hurt on one.
I went and watched it this week. I went over to New Britain to watch the kids on it and they were having a ball and I.
Yeah.
I talked to the guards there and they said they've never had an injury. The only thing they have to remember to do is to tighten it up every once in a while. And it becomes loose and shaky. I said, well, why do you know what happens? Well, usually the last kid up tells us.
Yeah, part of, part of, you know, I I talk about a lot of decisions to make the. If you're going to leave it up, you can buy a cover for it for the winter. New Britain chooses to take it down in the winter so they don't put the loctite on the bolts. So that's why they loosen up. You could sock those bolts up with loctite, but then you'd have to cover it in the winter. So it's a, it's a give and take.
Gotcha.
Um. But yeah, and we've done, you know, lots of water slides around and, you know, kids love those and. The diving board, you know, I I personally think the diving boards are great. I know Bill shares that. Some, some communities aren't. Um, are of that mindset, but again, the the injuries are pretty low in a well-designed diving hopper.
And the high school has a diving team. So it it just lends itself to high school students.
Yep. And and the other thing is uh on the pool size, getting back to whether this pool is big enough. There's a fine line between too big and too small. You you don't want to build the church for Easter Sunday and have a lot of empty water that you have to guard. Um, you know, every day of the of the summer. So it's just, you know, what what we've seen in other communities. Um, is this, this desire to build more water to have more options. And a lot of times it gives you fewer options. If you go to a really big pool, what you're going to find is. A high concentration of people in the shallow area and very few in the deep area. So you want to program that deep area with the slides and the climbing walls and the diving boards. You don't want to just have a bunch of open water. Um, that's not, not really used.
Churchill and Mill aren't hardly used at all.
Yeah, so if you go out on Churchill on a busy day, the the shallow half has got um eighty percent of the kids in it.
Yeah.
So you've built a lot, you've got a lot of pool there that's not used.
The other thing is a splash pad can take five hundred or a thousand kids at one time. It's crazy.
Yeah, yeah, you could put a lot of kids through there.
It it's unbelievable. And if they're not playing in the water, they're all around the edge of it laughing and yelling at their friends. It's really, it's fascinating to watch.
Yeah, yeah, it really is. Yep.
Okay, oh, I, one more thing. The special events that we have, we wouldn't need the fire trucks to spray on the kids. And all our concerts and those hot April, May, Junes, we have a splash pad. We, you know, there would be none of that all sweating to death kind of thing for the kids. They can go in, cool off, go back to their activities.
Um, uh, I'm, I'm sorry. This is probably putting the cart before the horse, but I, I haven't seen the slide. I can't tell from the picture. But is, would there be a way to um run a rope from. Across the wall where those are so that deep end could be used for like water polo or whatever? Because I know that the rock wall um sticks out into the um. Into the pool. I assume that the slide's got to stick out into the pool, the the board. That's no big deal, you just flap it up. But that, the kids like to play water polo, I know, at at certain times, but I I don't think they could do it unless those. Obstructions could be blocked off like with a rope or something so that they didn't, you know.
Yeah, the um, the climbing wall would actually be out of the way of um. Water polo, except for that, you know, couple of inches that goes into the water.
Yeah.
Um, and the slide goes in a foot. But yeah, you could, you could string uh float lines.
Yeah.
Anywhere. So typically, when we have multiple programs in the deep end, you have a series of float lines. Demarcating the area for the slide plunge and the drop zone for the slide or for the uh climbing wall and the diving board. So you can, you can move those around to do whatever you need to do.
Yeah, they would just go the other way and they would go perpendicular to the way the ones are in the picture, right?
And and if we know that that water polo is a program you want to run, then we can lay it out. To give you the maximum unobstructed wall to make that happen. You know, we can move some of these things around.
Yeah. Oh, I see. Because the diving board's on the other wall. Yeah, I, yeah, yeah.
One of the things that we did in New Britain was that I started a New England inner tube water polo for college kids. And that was unbelievably attractive. We had teams from New Hampshire, Rhode Island, Massachusetts. And they could play in the shallow end, you know, when you're on an intub, it doesn't matter. So you played in the shallow end to the deep end and it was fabulous.
Yeah, yeah, you put that right in the lap lanes, just pull the ropes out. Uh, underwater hockey is another thing that we're seeing more and more often.
Yeah, wow. With scuba gear, right?
Uh, snorkels and weights.
What's that?
Snorkels and weights.
Okay, snorkels. We did it with scuba diving in Springfield. We used tanks. Yeah, it's gonna go.
Yeah, it is cool. Yeah.
And, um, we're. What happens to the backstroke flags? Um, I can see where one set would be. Attached, but I don't see a wall.
You do a tagline, so you'd put, you'd put stanchion, uh, post on the, on the far sides, run a cable across and then.
I guess I don't see where it would be on one side. I don't see the, that.
In this, in this drawing, it's hard to see, but I don't know if you have a plan view there. Yeah, these renderings are a little, little tough to see the, they're, they're such a fine line.
Go all the way across to the fence that's on the other side of the world. All right, well, we'll figure it out.
There was a, uh, there was a, that question came from the, uh, New England Swim Club. They're, they're interested in having some competitive swimming. So that makes, that would, we could figure that out.
Yeah, they asked about that. They asked about landline storage and where the blacks, you know, be sure there was a place where the blacks could be stored. Um. Those were their big questions, that's all.
Yep. Yeah, we, we always do pretty big sized storage rooms off the pool deck for all that equipment. Uh, because you, you know. You, you really want to get it off the pool deck and when you're not using it, otherwise it just becomes an attractive nuisance.
Especially at night. The vandals.
And, and are the lifeguard chairs that you recommend on wheels or are they bolted into the deck?
Well, the movable ones are nice. We tend to end up with a combination of fixed and movable. So there's six where you know you're gonna need them and then movable, so as the programs change throughout the day, you can move the stands with them. It's, be, very rarely do we do all fixed anymore. Because the programs are so constantly changing.
Gotcha. Makes sense. Okay. Anybody have any questions besides me?
And been following this for a while, so.
All right. All right. All right. Well, thank you for, uh, once again coming to our rescue.
Sure, thanks for having me.
Well, I see you tomorrow at eleven for the garage meeting.
You will.
Wow, lucky duck.
Joe, Joe hired that company for the, the design of the garages and the highway in here.
That's good. Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Are you all set with me or?
I think so. Yes.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Um, okay. So. Are we moving on to number seven, other business pertinent to the committee? Oh, I know what we need to do. We need to make a schedule of when we're gonna meet. So. Carol, what days are you not available? No, when did, when does your ambulance stay?
Third Monday of the month, and then P and R is the second, I mean, the third Tuesday.
Okay, so not. Third Monday, oh, Tuesday. And. Your Tuesdays and when?
Yeah, second, fourth, Tuesday. I'm also third Monday, uh, third Tuesday as well.
So Tuesday is not good for anyone.
Other than the eighth, I mean, the, uh, thirteenth of August, um. I can make myself available for any, you know, just make my life available.
Okay, okay. Uh, Jim?
Oh, and I am going away at the end of August, but by then we'll have some stuff figured out.
Okay, at least I think it's positive. Uh, Jim, you there?
Yeah.
What's your schedule like?
Uh, well, Wednesdays during the school year is not usually good, um, every other Wednesday with the Board of Ed, um, and childcare.
Yeah.
Um. I can try to make other days work with activities and possible babysitting.
Okay. All right. So. It looks like Thursdays is a good day, right?
It's on Saturday six thirty.
Okay. Nice. Thursdays at six thirty. We need a second day to meet because we have too much to do in a short time.
Isn't it Mondays, okay, except for one of those Mondays?
So Mondays. The first, the second, and the fourth Monday. Does that make sense to everybody? The first, the second, and the fourth Mondays of the month, and every Thursday at six thirty. Okay. That work for you though?
What was the first part?
Thursdays.
Yeah, every Thursday.
And then the first, the second, and the fourth Monday. Okay, we're good with that? Do we have to make a motion or something that that's gonna?
Do we do it during the life meeting?
Five, yeah, July is a longer month.
There's five Mondays in July? Okay. Five, Monday, okay.
Do we, do we do it during the extravaganza?
No, so the extravaganza is the fifteenth, sixteenth.
Eighteenth would be the Thursday.
Right, and the fifteenth would be the Monday.
Okay, no.
But that's the third Monday.
Yeah, that would be the Monday you couldn't do.
So no fifteenth or eight. Okay. Yeah, take a week off. What can we do? Okay, so.
Sunday morning at six.
There we go.
Yeah.
Why don't you serve breakfast?
I open up that snack shack. They got a lot of my gigs. Um, okay, so. Thursdays at six thirty, the first, the second, the fourth, and the fifth. Mondays of the month and no meeting on the fifth or the eighteenth. Yes? Okay, do we need to make a motion for that or?
Before, before you get to that.
Yes, Jim.
Uh, let's make sure that we have enough, um, recordings to handle.
recordings?
We need to have enough seats to be able to run all of it. So right now. By eleventh, I already have four meetings that are scheduled on that date technically. Eighteenth, there's two, but you're not meeting on that one. By fourth, we won't be meeting. It's holiday. The Mondays we're fine with. That's not a problem. We don't usually see a lot of meetings on Mondays. See, Thursdays are your tricky one.
So the eleventh might be?
Yeah, it must be a tight one if, if we'd have to. Like, I can say environmental quality is not meeting. They don't have membership. We're good there and. Zoning Board of Appeals is canceled. Okay, so we have two that are there, so we could do that one.
Okay, so we're good. All right.
You just have to look as we go forward a bit. So you want to get your first month set up and then we can update that schedule.
And James, do you see it's, see us training our staff to do this or are you gonna do it or?
Uh, you'd need to have staff for it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I was here simply to start the meeting call door.
Well, plus, plus to be a supporter. Yes, yeah, I think.
So these meetings, this schedule would be for July and August.
What's your, what's your August looking like for dates? Let's just touch that, make sure.
The first, the second, the fourth.
Fourth, that's good.
Mondays and Thursdays.
Yeah, last two weeks of August, three weeks.
Beginning of school on there too.
Yeah, I got.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I got, well, I think.
These days look okay, right?
Oh, gosh, just so I can write this down, you have July eighth, July eleventh, July twenty-second. July. Trying to see, July twenty-fifth?
Yep.
Um, then that last week is the fifth week, so like. Twenty-ninth, okay.
The first.
July twenty-fifth, I'm gonna have to be over outside. I could come late, but it's the ADA celebration.
By then I'm gone, so I'll be gone. I'm gone on the twenty-third until September sixteenth, so. I'm ha, I'm kind of having a hope that we're pretty close plays prior to.
Yeah. But I meant July twenty-fifth, I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, yeah, July twenty-fifth.
That's the ADA celebration.
All those are Tuesdays.
I'm good. No, I'm on.
That's one way I'm making. Um, twenty-nine and the first, that would be great.
All right, well.
What, what do you see is ha, having that be done?
I think we have to have some concrete plan that we can address the council with in terms of. Answering these questions that they had so that they're informed that we're all on the same page, that we agree with. These answers that I wrote, um, like some, um, concrete answers about, um, the footprint. I would like some more concrete answers about parking, um, because they're not gonna even want to notice. Um, and I do think that. Um. If we go back to them with the same plan we were given, they're just gonna say no.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
I could say, yeah, I could say that some of the councils definitely want, um, something to talk about, um, let's go to Churchill as well. If you're gonna make a presentation.
It, well, of course I would come and, and talk, but I, I do, I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I really think that. Um, there's nothing that can be done with Churchill right now. We have.
Except the splash.
In relation to this last brother, I mentioned my information on.
Can he get us a, uh, some kind of a, you know.
Rough draft.
A rough draft like we have.
Of what?
Of Churchill, the Churchill splash pad.
True.
Yeah, that's what, that's what they're asking for.
That wouldn't be him. I would go to our playground person. It's called Vortex. Um, it's a product that I, um, it's made of steel and it's pretty vandal resistant. Uh, actually vandal proof, but, um, yeah, we could have them design. Is there any particular theme that you guys would like?
I think I would like to see some pictures and be able to pick, you know what I mean? Like I.
Read the different themes.
Yeah, I would like to like. There's some that have big flowers that are, there's some that have animals all over the place, you know, they're all all different.
Odyssey kind of thing, yeah.
Um, but what is your feeling as far as the council goes in terms of approving this?
There, yeah, I, I would say that I mean, I'm sponsored, uh, spoke to the majority. I mean, um, really spoken in my minority, but, uh, they're. Excited about the current plan. Um, some people have reserves about the size of the splash pad and the overall footprint, um, like the difference from the current footprint to new one. Um, so during the presentation, they just want more information. And then, yeah, like I said, if, if we're gonna present. Politically both, both parks at the same time, then they want something for, uh, about Churchill. They don't want to sign off on Bill Pond's. With Churchill included with no information on that.
That's fair. Okay, um.
And, and when we present to them, we have to just basically show them the concepts without worrying so much about the detail. But just give them a number and say. Uh, the conceptuals and we, we are, you know, we are recommending twelve million dollars. I'm just gonna pull that number out and. Then the final engineering plans is where we would be able to massage and, and possibly find. Some people could, that could, uh, get us additional money to offset the cost of what we're asking.
Yes.
For the referendum. So I think that, that is something we should keep in mind that is.
Yes, my, my plan would be to go to, um, Chamber, who I don't know if that's gonna be worth it or not, but I care to ask. Um. And some of our more usual benefactors.
Yeah.
We do have quite a few who may come across, may not come across, but all they can do is say no. So. Um, you know, I, I've been to other splash pads in other towns where, you know, on the top of the flower that says, get in by the road.
Why can't we sell our X for a walk by?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't hate stuff.
Oh, but you know, it's actually like, yeah. So we can sell off my solar.
Yeah.
AJ, I, I'm, I'm not clear on what the council wants for Churchill. Like, if we were to say at this time. We can't predict the need of a pool, a second pool at Churchill. Is that what you're looking for?
No, so it's more so if we were to go to the council with a proposal to update the pool here at Bill Pond and then add a splash pack at. Splash pad at Churchill.
Yeah.
They would just want some sort of either plan or design concept or just any information at all for the splash pad.
Oh.
Now, yeah, we understand that.
No, I mean. They do. We have all, as more Eileen said, you know, we have a lot of things happening in this town right now.
Yeah.
And we, and, and especially not knowing how this is going to. We're, you know, a lot of people from down there may come here, who knows? So we won't know that and we can reevaluate.
Yeah, and I, I don't really think we're gonna know that in the first year either, because I think it's gonna have to be a couple of years of study. And we have to wait and see what happens with the apartments.
Right, and most apartments are having small pools.
Yes, very small.
Right, but you know, supposedly they're very limited.
Kids, yeah. It's like one point two or something I saw. It was crazy. It was a very small amount of children in that statistics.
Would it be possible to do a rendering? And I think, for some reason, I thought I saw this like years ago. Of where the new pool is and then like hash marks of where the existing pool is. So people can see that we're not taking. Open space. We're not, it's almost, you know. Square foot for square foot, like an overlay. So this is what it looks now and then put the overlay. So people can, can visualize that now they're looking into the pond, there's gonna be all this extra open space there.
Yeah, and that twenty thousand square feet of, of land that's people don't even see.
Exactly.
That's something people, I don't think even have in their head, but that's actually. A really positive, um, opening.
Addition.
Addition to, that they don't even know.
They don't even know about. We have no clue about it. Yeah.
I saw a great thing today at, um, Elizabeth Park. They have this big giant, almost looks like a lifeguard stand in the park and. People jump on it and take pictures. I was thinking, how great would it be to be down there as you're walking around the pond? They have something down there for, for pictures and then it would say the benefits are endless on the, on the back seat of it. It's pretty cool.
What are your guys' feelings about the concession stand?
They keep it in the building?
Yeah, there is a small concession stand within the, um, the bath house, the new, the new bath house. But it's nothing compared to the concession stand that's down there. It's very small.
Well, the moment the new bath house, I mean, if you say the pool's closed.
Yeah.
People wouldn't be able to use the concession stand.
Exactly.
Right. If the fence is locked. So, I mean. Personally, I would like to see that concession stand stay open for the time being and see traffic patterns.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Yeah, I do too.
You keep it open for a while anyway. Just to let everyone know the history, they burnt it down, the kids burnt it down.
Oh, I don't remember.
It was a hundred and ten thousand dollars to rebuild that.
Well, maybe the town can get a food truck. You can get a food truck instead and drive it around the park.
Yeah, but then we do your bathrooms still.
With wine.
Okay, James is down last, special finger down there, not that one, this one. Now we have to get back to our schedule. We lost track. Okay, so. We're on for August and July and August. We're on for, uh, every Thursday. And the first, the second, the fourth, and the fifth Monday of. July. And no fifteenth or eighteenth. Are we good with that, James?
Uh, yeah, I think you're fine on the schedule itself. We should have open, uh. The council.
Okay, all right. So, so what am I missing?
This, this turn and the second and the.
You made a motion. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we will be meeting. On the first, second, third, or no, fourth, uh, Monday in July and, uh. And, and the fifth, and then the eleventh, the twenty-fifth, August first, August fifth, twelfth. And, uh, other Mondays in August and Thursdays in August. I don't have all those.
I second it. Montez, uh, hi. Good? Okay, the ocean passes. Okay, so we have a schedule, yay. Okay, uh. Are we?
Do, do you want to work backwards to try to figure out when you can meet James's request to get to the council?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I've got no request on it. I've just gave you numbers.
Dates, the dates. Okay, so. In order to get to a. New ballot question. On election.
Okay.
When do you need stuff from a slide?
The council would need, now I'm just giving you estimates here, so give me a second. Uh, let's see, I think on which way they go with it. Our council. And hearing, so. I would say by August thirteenth. They would have to get the conceptual plan, request bond language, um. By maybe the twenty-seventh, schedule a public.
Bond languages by the twenty. Bond language is by the twenty-seventh.
August twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
That would be initial presentation. The tenth would be introduction of that language and scheduling of a public hearing on September twenty-fourth. Uh at that point, they could put it out as a greater than three weeks, or you could still move it down one set of weeks, so two weeks forward and still meet with a less than three weeks. So we could look all the way out to October eighth at the latest point. We'd need to have at least four days for a creation of ballots, then the fifteenth would put us in less than three weeks.
Can you send us that as well as the earlier date?
That one, I still have to work out the numbers.
Yeah, we really, cuz I
For you guys, it doesn't matter.
No, I know, but the council, the council has has the ability, as we all know, to have special meetings.
Right.
They do.
And and I think they have a willingness to have special meetings if it means that we do what we need to do. Am I speaking out of turn?
I I don't know how much they're gonna wanna take those and turn them into waivers, especially with the last issue that we saw.
Yeah.
I'm trying to make sure that all of those meetings are substantial and come the way.
Right, and I'm very concerned about transparency and not having special meetings just to push something through. Cuz I think that's gonna be very detrimental to our project. So I think if we can stick to your meetings and not make them push this, it I think would be more advantageous to us and to the council.
I'm sure people don't wanna be on.
They they don't, they don't. No, and I know, well, you know, I was on the council for many years and, you know, I know, but I I think what I'm hearing on the street is we have to be extremely transparent. We can't push this through just for the sake of getting it on the ballot or whatever.
Okay. There are holidays in there. Isn't there a Jewish holiday in?
That's not until later in September.
Labor Day's in there, but I
Yeah, but I think they're late in this, late in September in the beginning.
Well, we're talking October eighth.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm asking.
Actually, I had them on my
Yeah, October third, October.
Yeah, that sounds right, cuz I have found.
That's a Thursday. And what's that holiday? Uh Rosh Hashanah.
That's a big one.
Yeah.
That's a huge.
Yep.
And I think, isn't Yom Kippur just the week before?
The after.
The week after.
Yeah, it's the twelfth. It says here that last.
Those are late.
That's a sound.
James, could you explain to everyone for transparency what the rules are for staff like me or this commission or this committee or our commission in regards to that quiet period of time by so
Quiet period doesn't happen until after the council proves that bond language. Guys can talk about the project, you can discuss the plans, you can do all of that up until passage by the council.
Can they hand out flyers at the pool or have signs up?
Right now, it's an open session. You can do what you need to do to to advise the public of the project. Once we hit that quiet period, bond council will advise as to what each party, individual or group can do. As an individual, you can always advocate for a program. If you're advocating as part of the the uh entity that brought it forward, that's a little bit different. Uh if you're doing it at a council, you can always do it as your individual. If the council is going to do it, they're usually gonna do it through the explanatory text process, so it's a little bit cleaner for them as well. So in addition to that, you always have the ability to create a public action committee to be able to advocate for the program. Take in fundraising, make signage, make advertisements, all of that. And they'd have that for
They can do that anytime.
They can create that at any point, but usually you have a project that's created for it specifically. They could create it right now if you wanted to, you know, you've got a project they're looking at. But you don't know when it's gonna come to fruition at this point.
And so like a Don Woods, who's the chairman of Parks and Rec, he could say, I'm I'm in favor of the of the project.
Sure.
As a, but not talk as far as as chairman, but as an individual.
As an individual, that's all right.
Yeah.
That's that's the cleanest way to do it. You always have your right to be able to speak as a citizen of the town and how it affects you. When you start talking as either in his case, member of the parks board directly, especially as the chairman, it shows a little bit more weight to it in that aspect. So you always wanna try to eliminate that impropriety when possible.
And how does he say it? He goes, I'm I'm Don Woods and I'm speaking on my
On my own behalf.
On my own behalf.
Yes, okay. Okay, well, we've been at this for a little over an hour and a half. I think we could meet again on Thursday and um clean up some of what we need to do.
It's three.
I mean, next Monday. We we could meet Wednesday. I don't think anybody would want to.
So we're gonna meet Monday? Monday, okay, that will be our next meeting. Um alright, um so we're down to number eight, public participation. Anybody got anything you wanna say and add in?
It's it's mostly my notes. Alright, Dana Havens, one thirty in the Statter. So I'm gonna just bring up a concern that I think's gonna hurt you guys. I know I myself was very happy that Churchill was gonna be part of this whole discussion and basically what I'm seeing is you guys are like going and we don't know what I could do with Churchill and I think we're just gonna close the pool and add a splash pad. So I think we need to see more thought put into Churchill. I know I'm abbreviating, but that's kinda what I heard here. No more pool at Churchill, just a splash pad.
No.
That's how it came across. I'm just I'm just saying. Um so then if it didn't, I would like clarification on what your fans for Churchill are. And I do know that the pool now, that sock thing, how much does that cost? Cuz it sounds like until this pool's built, we gotta keep that one running. So just keep, just curiosity. Um and then the parking issue, and you said, well, we're gonna have OFI. Um but as a mom and an older person now, but that's a really long walk. And I am very concerned with the pool being right there and the kids having to cross Garfield, which is really quite busy now right now. It's not proving my point right now. But normally it is kind of quite busy. And I'm just thinking, we blocked off the entrance from Cedar Street to the library because one child almost got hit by a car. And now we're asking that all our senior citizens and all our little kids cross Garfield to get to this pool. And that's why I, that's why that location just kind of bothers me and I really would like you to that into consideration. And speaking of that, at the meeting sometime in two thousand twenty-three, um when the architect was speaking and the mayor was there and lots of questions were asked, um locating the pool over by the playground was mentioned and the architect did say that there are workarounds to the water level and it could be done. And it was asked that he give us like a drawing and an estimate for all that. He said he could get it in two weeks and then I never ever saw anything. So I really think that we all deserve to see that still. Let's see. And oh yeah, so that brief mention that like we just have one pool, I gotta tell you, going back as when I was a parent, we'd bebop from pool to pool basically based on those campers because that is a lot of campers. And when those kids would come in, my kid kind of would get run over. So we would pick up and leave and then we'd go to Churchill. And if they were coming to Churchill, we'd pick up and leave and go to Mill Pond. And um it's just, and then it's also nice to like meet up with their friends that live in that area at the other pool. So I would really would really like to see, especially with all the building that's going on and my A D going on in the future, that we keep two pools open.
My name's Bill McCarthy, two oh six Churchill Drive. I was I was perusing old minutes from a long, long time ago and back in two thousand and five, there was a proposal to close the pool at Churchill altogether and make pavilion, make another pavilion area. I sometime in the future, that might be a good idea when that pool becomes unmanageable. Uh the splash pad, I'm I'm totally in favor of the splash pad over at Churchill. And uh the proposal here at Mill Pond, I think that as as a member of the community, I don't really know what the whole project is gonna look like and I I people have posted online what the what the project is. And uh it's a lot of, like I said, it's a hundred and forty-five pages or something like that, the architectural proposal. I think I I think you guys have done a great job starting and stuff like that and uh I think that if you're gonna, if if the plan is to get it onto the referendum for this fall or winter, whatever that is, that that should be, you know, the like Mike, that guy Michael was saying, this is this is a conceptual plan. I think it has to be presented to the community that way, that this is not the finished product that you're voting on. What you're voting on is the twelve million dollars for the pool for for the reconstruction of Mill Pond. And the splash pad over at Churchill. So I guess that that's everything I know, sir.
Can you have Rose Lyons on line?
Hi, Rose.
Second. Steve on, there we go.
Hi, Rose Lyons, forty-six Elton Drive. Um now you're gonna get the history of the pools according to a resident who's been around since uh the presentation of the nineteen million dollar renovation of Churchill Park at a C I P meeting that my mouse dropped to my feet and for once in my life, my big mouse was was speechless. Uh it was quite apparent that Mr. De Mayo was given some direction or misdirection because I do not know how they would have sent him into a C I P meeting to present a nineteen million dollar project when C I P didn't even have nineteen million dollars, but that's another story. It's for the public hearing on Churchill Park, that was billed as a public hearing, but it was actually an informational session and I don't think that it ever went anywhere. There was never any committee and I think Mr. De Mayo's correct, there was not the appetite for it here in Newington. As for the Mill Pond Park Pool Project Committee, I have to admit that I wasn't watching as much as I should have been watching. It was established in twenty twenty. From what I remember, there were meetings in twenty twenty-one. I remember it going to the council and the the mayor saying that she wanted to rein in the uh committee and give them some direction as to which way she really wanted to see it go. And then they brought it to the council in August, I believe of twenty twenty-one. And uh she asked John Donahue to go back to the committee and tell them what they were concerned about as far as what they had come up with with a plan. And this is the way I've seen building committees before. They're given the charge, they do what they have to do, they go back to the town council. Town council says we like this, but we don't like that, bring it back to us. I think a year went by before there was ever another meeting. And then I read in the Parks and Rec Minutes that Representative Turco had offered up five million dollars in bonding. And the beat went on, but nothing ever happened. And um the opportunity went by us. I am all for new pools. I am going to be seventy-nine years old. The pool was built when I was probably twelve. I never learned to swim because we didn't have anything other than Churchill Pond. In any case, um I'm glad to see that this is going forward. But as Carol Anist has said, I wanna see you be open and transparent. And I'm not saying anything to you right now that I didn't say at a town council meeting and I even took to Facebook. This was not open and transparent the way this committee was set up. I read the Parks and Rec Minutes and Carol and Eileen were appointed to the Mill Pond Park Pool Committee, which probably was a mistake. Probably was for the new committee, but the new committee hadn't even been established. The perception when you, the majority presents to the town council an idea, which is a great idea, I believe that both pools need to be addressed. Let the minority know what you're doing. It's it's bad optics. It doesn't, it doesn't look good. And I saw what happened with the last committee. There were side conversations, which I mentioned to Eileen, and right now, maybe councillor Miakis has been told by the majority that he can share some of their thoughts, but I don't think I've ever seen it go back and forth between a councillor who's a member and then bring it back to the council. I would like to see updates at the town council meetings. People put their egos aside, politics aside, and come up with a plan for all the residents that we can agree upon. Uh this just, it has to be taken care of, but if you wait, rush into this, haste is gonna make waste and you're gonna have another failure. As far as the pools being for the new people, I wouldn't even consider the new people right now, in my opinion. If there's so little children at those pools and they're paying three thousand dollars for rents up on the Berlin Turnpike and from what I'm reading in the newspaper and the land transfers, the houses behind uh Walmart are selling for eight hundred and fifty thousand. Think about the north end of town with the older people, think about the town, the middle class, and do what's best for everyone. Thank you very much for your efforts.
Thanks, Rose. Need anything else on there? No.
Anything else online?
Okay, um comments by committee members. I wanna start.
Yeah. Answer Dana.
Yes, I gotta, I gotta listen. I'm not just gonna answer Dana, I'm gonna answer everybody. Okay, first first thing is, no one said to close Mill. Um Churchill, Churchill, sorry. What we did say was that um we wanted to study what would happen with this new pool here, this new, with all its new amenities, what would happen? Would there still be swimmers at Churchill? Would they all just gravitate over here to the new pool? Is is it meeting our needs? It's hard to decide if we would need a second pool. Our population in town can grow as much as ten percent. Yes, I know that there are, a lot of them have a lot of money, but it doesn't mean their kids don't go to um camp somewhere in the summer. Maybe it's not the public camp, but whatever. We don't know that. We don't have any way of knowing that. So that was our our plan. Our plan was not to say close Churchill Pool. Our plan was to say, get some data. Base it on the facts, base it on on the numbers and move on from there. And I I mean, be serious, to hit the town with ten thousand, uh ten million for this pool and ten million for that pool, we won't have a chance in hell. So we gotta do one at a time, study what happens with number two and go on from there.
But your charge is to do both?
As far as, uh yes, it is. And our our charge is, our charge answer is to study. Um as far as crossing Garfield Street, there is plenty of parking right down there. And there will be a path to the new pool. That walk from that parking lot to the new pool is still equal to, if not shorter, than the walk from the parking lot to get to Churchill Pool. So there is plenty of parking that you would not have to get to Milton, no, to get to Churchill.
And that's why we hardly ever went to church.
The walk from the parking lot of Churchill up to the up to the pool, this is actually a nicer walk. It's flat. It's not that bad.
Add to that, this, the plans are, we're working on a new road here at Garfield Street with two sets of those flashing lights that you push a button and it would be lined up with the entrance to the pool. So this would be a whole with sidewalks on that side.
Oh, that's great.
So, you know.
Handicap accessible parking lots. This, all these were made here with Gary and I so that if you were in a wheelchair, you could park here and cross to the pool.
Nice.
So it all works. Um so that's crossing Garfield. The plan is to study, not to close. And yes, the playground location would look that for the pool. Anybody who goes to this park knows that if you look at the area of grass in front of that pool house, there's always a big puddle there for a reason because the groundwater is too high. The groundwater is high over by um the parking uh of the playground. Could it be built there? Sure, but it would take a whole lot of different engineering. It wouldn't have the shelf life that a pool over here would have because the groundwater isn't there. We'd have to worry about heaving.
And possibly impacting.
Yes.
There's covers.
Sixty years being high groundwater, so. Let's have Matt back in for our
Yes, thank you. I would like to think that we we learned something. Oh, two thousand and five proposal to close Churchill, make another pavilion in favor of the splash pad, uh voting on a concept and not a finished product. Yes, I agree a hundred percent. Thank you. And um as far as Rose's comments, Rose, I did mention that my plan is to meet regularly with the council and give them an update about what is going on with our committee, um our Um, our minutes will all be posted, um, and, um, this is always available on YouTube. And, you know, yes, many of the people that are coming into this town stand to, uh, be wealthy, um, but that's still a ten percent increase in population, uh, so those kids may go to camp, we don't know. We don't know what's gonna happen, so to do something prematurely, um, just doesn't make sense. I, I, that's my personal opinion, I, I think we need to give it a few years, let this flesh out, see what happens and then move on from there. Um, anybody else have comments that they need to make?
Yeah, go ahead. I just wanna bring to agenda setting that this should probably be a standard thing on the agenda for every meeting. And then if, I mean, if somebody does not show up, we just pass it, at least it's on there. Yep, so the public knows that council is staying on top of this and we're staying.
No, you said, I mean, I would just echo what you said, I mean, the, the, I, I looked a lot at those engineering reports, my husband's an engineer too, so I have his expert advice when I didn't even understand some of it cuz it was so intense, but that, that site, cuz I actually kinda liked that site when I first saw it before I learned more about the problems with that site. And it really is wet and it would cost a lot more money and it's got the ability to basically screw up some of those residents cuz water, when we dig it out, water's going somewhere and it's not always gone where you would expect it to go.
And it'll happen to these residents if they build.
Not, not here, cuz this is a, it's a different water table, this is such, is a much drier area right in here, so it, I just to address that. And, uh, you know, again, we, we aren't saying we wanna close Churchill at all, we're just saying we need time to look at it, and, and as far as this committee being in charge of both two, I do think that, um, I mean, we don't have an end date, so this is not gonna go away, you know, and we'll be evaluating and, and then we can, maybe we have another referendum in four years for the second pool, you know, if we need it, and I think we'll know, we'll know, I, I'm sure we'll know as time moves on, so.
I think if I could add, a good Parks and Recreation Department and a good Parks and Recreation Board constantly evaluates their programs, their facilities on a daily basis, not only, you know, monthly or whatever, so, you know, we're gonna know right away if Churchill's needed or not, we, we know where most kids play in neighborhood playgrounds, we know what basketball courts need to be, you know, resurfaced, we know what, um, handicap accessible things have to be done, so I think you, you know, we're always in a constant evaluation of what's going on and we move programs and things around to make it a- appealing to people, the residents and doing, so. We're not gonna, you know, close our eyes to it and not be, be sensitive to it.
Okay, we're all good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can I have multiple jury? Oh, oh, Jim, you got anything to say, you didn't raise your hand.
I'm good right now.
Okay.
I have a lot of questions, but maybe not for today, maybe for the next meeting.
Alright, beautiful, I'll talk with you between now and then, we'll see what else. Okay, um, motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second, second, someone favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thanks, everybody, thanks, James.
Bill, do you need right?
Sure. Great.